We will come to order if we could rise for the national, I mean for the plant, for allegiance and also movement of science. All right, glad to have everybody here tonight. I think it's gonna be about a four hour meeting, so we'll go ahead and start. First approval amendments, January tenth, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? Second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. We have two guests here tonight. First, we have Maris County Commission Chair Steve Morris. Steve? Um, Steve is the liaison between the county commissioner and the city council. So thank you for being here today. Um, I hope you learned something about how to run a meeting. But Steve and I can go back thirty, thirty-five years now, so we, we, we were actually on the historic commission. You gotta go back in nineteen eighty-nine. We're about two, two years old, yes. Very close, very close. So thank you for being here. Do you have any youth council here? Please stand and tell us what school, school you're at and what grade you're in. And your name? Very good. Well, thank you for being here and we appreciate the work you're doing with, with the youth council. Is there any scouts here? No scouts tonight? All right. Thank you very much. First, we're gonna do a presentation of proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month. Am I gonna go ahead and read this? Whereas National Black History Month is a page commemorating the countless contributions of African Americans to enrich American life. And whereas this year's theme, Black Resistance, established by the Association of Study of American, African American Life and History, the ASIWH, highlights now historic and ongoing oppression in the various forms it has been resisted by black, black people through the generations in form of learning our history, driving political action, supporting black-owned businesses, and much more. Whereas American history brings stories of African Americans to further change their communities and our country. Whereas Black History Month is called for every citizen reflecting the contributions of African Americans which are woven throughout American history. Now therefore, I would have seen us along with the city council and city of Concord do hereby proclaim the honor of the month of February being recognized as National Black History Month. So I just want to, just... I want everyone to, to, to take this to heart and be a part of this. This is important for our community. It's part, important to our citizens. So thank you, thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna present a retirement plaque from Mark Marshall for over thirty years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Concord. Mark, I'm gonna come down. You're gonna come up and I'm gonna present this plaque.
Well, Mark, we've been way back also. I've been working with Mark for twenty-six years of his thirty here. And hi- his involvement has been throughout the city, building grounds in many, many different ways. And, uh, are you gonna talk, talk about the internet or do you want me to talk about it? Well, one of the, one of the things that happened along the way was that in, in, in the mid-nineties, we started getting the internet in the city of Concord. And we tried different ways and Mark would be, as we were starting to install throughout the buildings, Mark would say, what is this? What's going on here? So he would, he would laugh at us. I'm not sure if he thought it'd ever work right, but, uh, Mark, it did.
Most of the time.
But, but, but Mark, tell us a little, tell us a little bit about your career.
Well, um, started in October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-one. Been to a lot of... tore down some buildings. We built new ones. I think our family, employees, directors, councilmen, uh, everybody. We've, uh, we've been to a lot of them. Um, we buried a lot. Quite a bit, uh, seen a lot over the years. Glad we tore a couple of buildings down. I didn't try to take care of them. Clear what? All of them. Yeah, we took care of all the buildings. Yeah. We don't, didn't have as much help as we do now. That's for sure. But, uh, I s- you know, I thank the Lord for taking care of me and giving me a good help. Thirty-one years here at the city. You know, a lot of people, a lot of them, they're saying, you know, we get old, Mark, we get old, you know. So that's, that's, that's good, man. It's good that we get old. Everybody not afforded that opportunity. I appreciate, I appreciate, uh, everyone at the city and all the time that, you know, that I served here. And I'm enjoying my retirement.
Who do you have here?
I have, uh, my wife Susan, do you stand? My grandson Maddox, grandson Jaden, and granddaughter Zor.
Very good.
Yes, and I have, uh, Louise. Now Louise and Travis, which is Susan's, uh, son and son-in-law. Glad to have them here too.
So Mark, what's gonna be your next endeavor?
I run a handyman business and I keep a lot of, and deliver a bit of charity card. Kind of spend some time with family.
Very good.
Yep.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did that to you?
All right, well, thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business. Number one, consider approving Public Art Master Plan for Concord to serve as a guide to implementing public art throughout the city of Concord.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all of you who are here. I make the motion that we approve motion number one under item five to implement public art throughout the city of Concord. I'd also like to ma- add that the observations and clarifications which I am now going to make be added to the official record as part of this motion. To be clear, approval of the master art plan does not mandate the council to approve any new public art cost or staff. This plan does not obligate the city of Concord to any specific future funding or staffing related to public art. Funding for any future city project must go through the regular annual budget process. Staffing for the city is the responsibility of our city manager. And funding for staff is approved by the council at the request of the manager. By previous motion of the council, the master art plan has been a year in development and costs us sixty thousand dollars. It is a large plan that provides a broad overview of hundreds of potential projects that we as a council may approve and fund in the future. It emphasizes local artists and our city's diverse communities. Extensive research was done. All council members current and past were interviewed. Over half our city departments were involved. Over six hundred people responded to surveys. Local artists and community leaders provide insight. This plan truly reflects what the community has said to us. As the master art plan states regarding projects on page nineteen, each of the potential projects includes a brief description, including goals for a project and a potential budget. Potential project, potential budget. The proposed budget is an estimate of an appropriate budget for specific opportunities based on budgets of similar projects elsewhere. They are illustrative. They are not regulatory. Therefore, again, I make this motion and especially want the sentence added to this report. Approval of a public art master plan does not mandate the council to approve any new public art or staff. Thank you.
Thank you. There, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mayor and council, uh, Councilman Langford and I have had multiple conversations about this. And I'll, I'll be forceful but also respectful in that I disagree with Councilman Langford. Uh, there's a lot of language about allocating funding, uh, which indicates more than potential. What concerns me the most is there's no mention of public-private partnerships in this plan. So if it's funding, it's taxpayer funding. And I've been very clear from the start, I cannot support that. I do not see using taxpayer to fund all of this. I could see portions of it, but with all the things we've got to do in this city, we can't step over those items that are undone to move to full funding of public art. And the second part is the staffing. If the, if it's potential, but we turn around and say that we're gonna hire professional staff to allocate, to, to maintain this, this plan puts this whole plan on the taxpayers of this city. And I've been very clear and I've talked, you know, I know we got six hundred people. That was not the response. I tried to look at the responses. In fact, a lot of the responses don't really match this plan. But I've got one very major advisor to me. And she has probably the best moral compass of anyone I've ever known. And I was talking to her about this. And she said, J.C., you usually do your homework. You'll do the right thing, but don't you spend any of my tax money on public art. And I'm gonna go home, go to bed with her tonight. So I cannot vote for this. So I, I will be a note, a no if we continue with this. And that's, I just wanted to explain my vote. I'm not trying to preach to anyone. Everyone's got their vote. That's mine. That's what my, my heart tells me.
Yes?
Yeah, Mayor. Andy, I also wanna say, um, that, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the committee and everybody who, who worked really hard on this. And, uh, I, this is out of respect, but I've done a lot of homework as well. And, you know, I think any master plan that we do, it's a given that it's not a mandate. You know, we did a downtown master plan ten years ago and, you know, it said we were gonna build a pond there. And, you know, we, we adopted it and, you know, we, we liked parts of it. But I think, um, I will tell you, the staff that we have in this room and I, and our city, when we set out to do a plan, this staff sets the wheels rolling to do it. And we've got a good staff. And, 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 you know, that's what concerns me about this. And I'll tell you, um, I'm, I'm somebody who believes in art and I put my own personal dollars in art. I like to, you know, I, I, I think it's good to put the curtains up at the house. But, um, we've got a, a lot of things. I mean, I've, I've, I've hired a lot of professional musicians. Um, so I'm, I'm really big into art. I've got, um, some of Funky Town's artwork at, at my office building. Hello, Funky Town. Um, but, uh, I, I'll tell you a couple of things I do like about this plan. And I'm not saying I don't like any of the plan. But some of the attributes is, you know, it determines, I, I do think it's important because we kinda are willy-nilly a little bit about how much money we do wanna invest in arts. And I do think it is an investment. But I think this does establish a, a baseline for which we can say, this is how much we wanna spend. I know at one point we gave all that to the Arts Council. So I think that's worthy of discussion. And I think a lot of this plan, we can take, take from that. But, um, I love the part about supporting local organizations and artists through the grant process. Um, I like, um, you know, I'll talks about bringing culture within all city departments, like a culture within our city, to sort of think about how to incorporate art where we can using partnerships. And I think it creates a process for, for some asks that we get as a city. And I, I love the emphasis on the gateways. Um, I like talking about seed money for things to come. And I like the part about the, the artist roster. You know, I think there's a lot of things to be taken away from this study. But here's the negatives, I feel. Last meeting, the reason why we kicked this down the road is because of the dollar amounts, um, were included in there. And I really had a problem with that. And, and I feel like, you know, when you say, i- if this was a brainstorming session, then I would be okay with it. But this is actually a plan. And, um, I personally don't consider this a plan that I want fully. And I think we have a lot of other priorities, like Councilman McKenzie said. Um, we've got, our power bills are going up tremendously. You know, we've just borrowed money for parks and rec. And, um, you know, we're gonna probably have to pay for the cost of borrowing that money. We don't have enough sewage capacity to, to keep up with the growth. Um, we don't know what that final bill is gonna be when they send, you know, that's gonna pass, be passed through for, for sewage. Um, we've got revaluations coming up. Our landfill's filling up. And, uh, we've just got a lot of big things to tackle in our city going forward. And, um, I just don't think the government right now should be finding ways to, to, to do additional expenses. I think we need to tighten more. Um, you know, if anything, we need to really tighten our belts. Um, and, um, the, the part that I really had a, had a problem with especially is on page twenty-four. Um, it talked about, uh, using some of our borrowed money through the bond package to, to fund these arts. And, and I did a, a spreadsheet and I pulled out all the potential budget recommendations in this thing. And it was about one point two million dollars to use out of the, the sixty million. And, and I can read the paragraph. I won't bore you, but it's on page twenty-four. And it talks about the new bond package we passed and how some of those funds should be used. And there was recommended proposed budget amounts. And I just can't justify asking our taxpayers in November to borrow money and then turn around and then say, well, we're gonna add some more lines to our budget. I just can't do it. Um, and again, I think this plan, parts of it, we can approve maybe later, but the way it's written now, I don't like it. You know, every time we set a plan at direct staff, we set goals. It does say in here, these are goals for staff. And it directs staff to begin working on this. And that's gonna get into the budget. And, and I just, you know, I think there's a lot of positive things that can be gleaned. But, um, I just wanna reiterate that we can learn a lot from this study. And I really believe that we need to have arts in our community, but I just don't like this, this full plan and I can't approve it either. I can't, I have to say no to that.
I have two items to clean up, please. Uh, sometimes I ramble, sometimes I don't.
J.C., go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, for, I'm not against art. And Pam and I both have given considerably to several arts, uh, organizations, but that's our choice on our art. The second thing is I gotta finish the rest of her quote. What she told me exactly was, don't spend my money, my taxpayer money on public art as long as I'm still packing backpacks for children at Wolfman Elementary every week so they can have enough to eat on the weekend. That was her full quote. So Pam, again, is not against public art. It's just a matter of priorities. And when we pick our money, it's our money. When we try to allocate the taxpayers' money, I, I just can't, I can't see that, not for public art, but...
Terry?
Thanks, J.C. Um, wow. Let me just say a couple of things on this. And then I'll go back and say, we spent sixty thousand dollars. Why'd we do that then? I would have to say, don't talk. I'm just gonna say, I just said that, okay? And by saying that, we did it. And therefore, we were at that point in time looking for something to give us direction on what to do with art because we were a little bit confused on who was doing what. I'll go back to the, the Avery mural. Who did that and why? I have no idea. But it looks good. Someone paid for it and it looks pretty nice, I think. At the end of the day, though, what, I think this is more of a guide. Get the word "plan" out of this. And I, I, I think that's a, you're just, I know McClatchest needs to go away. It's, it's not a plan. It's a guide, what we could do. And I'm, I'm gonna make a motion or make an, I'll make a suggestion. If you put it in form of motion, that'd be great. If you ask me to do that, I'll do that. That this be tabled, number one. This be tabled and all referencing to potential budget, which is in every one of these park scenarios with one, to your one point five million, I guess, Brian, is where we're coming from. Everything relating to any of that be pulled from this, have it go back, rewritten, sent back to us as a guide. And with, including Andy's, obviously, his dissertation he just gave. And then let's look at that again one more time.
We, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Okay, I'm sorry then. I, I didn't, I didn't say I'd put a motion into it, but you declined that?
He can withdraw his mo- motion and we can make a second motion or we'll have to vote on the first motion.
Terry, I'm, I'm going to oppose your, your suggestion to table. Um, I like your idea that this is a guide.
Yeah.
Not a plan. I'd be willing to amend the document to say this is a guide and not a plan. That's perfectly okay with me. But we've been, we've been working on this for a year. We have had, I have updated every one of our council meetings. This is what's been going on. Um, I, I do wanna be clear. This document has in it all sorts of stuff about public-private partnership. When we appoint the Public Art Commission, one of its primary tasks is to develop public-private partnerships on art. And there are things out there. And we're going to appoint a Public Art Commission whose responsibility is to look at public-private partnership. Uh, and I think that's absolutely critical. Um, I don't think this is a debate between hungry children and public art. We, we have, we need to do these things. There's a, seems to me to be a fundamental misunderstanding how we do budget. We are not approving a budget for this night that takes any money away from hungry children and anybody else. That's not part of this plan. Likewise, Brian said this indicates that monies out of the bond issue that we just passed will be allocated to this. That is absolutely incorrect. The bond issue that we passed did not include mention of public art. It would be inappropriate and probably illegal for us to use some of that sixty million dollars on public art. We would like public art in the parks, but that will come out of our monies, private monies, people sponsoring things. But don't confuse this with the bond issue that we just passed. And so, you know, I would be willing to, yet I don't know how else to say it. This is a guide. This is not a mandate. As I've added to the record, no funding for any particular art project, not one point two, not a dollar. And no staffing. Lloyd makes those recommendations. We haven't done it. So I think we just pass it. We give this to the Public Art Commission. Let them run with it. And they will come back to us probably in a year and say, these are some things we could do, private, public, other ways. This is how we may do it. And then at that point, a year from now, And then at that point, a year from now, council can say, I agree. Or I don't agree. That's the responsibility of the council or probably future councils. But this gives us a starting point. And I like your language, Terry. It's a guide. That's what it is. Let's not make it into that which it is not.
Okay.
And I agree with you. And I'm not going to reiterate whatever you said and bore everybody by repeating my, repeating all this. It's a guide and that's all it is. The commission, which we haven't even talked about yet. If you look at the, you know, guidelines for it, it, nothing will ever get put before council without going through that commission for starters. Nothing, nothing. We'll go to that. And guess whose job it is to make the decision once that occurs? Nothing different than every other commission that we have. They're the same, they're advisors. That's all they're doing. So we end up making the final decision on every nickel that would be spent on anything involving art, regardless of where it is. And let alone the $60 million bond package that we keep referring to, which I think needs to be off the table, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
I agree with Andy and I would, I would support it.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I respect everyone's opinion that's been shared here. I was part of the committee to put this plan together. And it is a guide. That's what it is. And Councilman King, you used the right word, recommendation. That's what it is, is recommendation. It's not saying that we have to do this or we have to do that. I see it as a flexible document as time moves along and the commission is put in place. So like you said, too, we need art in our community and we need some way to manage that art. And to me, this guide will direct us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I, I would just like to refer Councilman Langford to page 24 and, and just let you know that there's a couple of paragraphs that do mention the, the bond package and the bond money. And then it goes on to state that those opportunities to integrate those budgets with, and then it has specific dollar amounts. That's the part I do not appreciate. I, I don't, I don't like that. Again, there's so much of this plan that I like, Andy. I really do. I, I think, but it, but there's just, there's parts of it that I really don't like. And, and I just still am that way on that.
Brian, I want you to, I respect your opinion. I should have said that first out and I, and, and J.C.'s as well.
Yeah, of course, we all respect each other. That's a given. We, yeah. This is one of those rare moments where we've had, had sort of a, a good discussion here. So I think this, that we usually are, are all, all the same on things, but this is a tough decision.
I, I would say I think everyone's got their opinion of this. I think it's deep inside of us. Maybe it's just time to vote. I know we're missing two members, but maybe it's just time to vote on what Andy's put forward.
So we have a motion in front of us in a second. And it is as stated with the additions that Andy has made about, about monies being spent and staff. So are we ready to vote? All right. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All right. Passes three to two. Thank you. Number two, consider adopting bylaws in newly created Public Art Commission. So Andy, you're up again.
So how we move forward is we are naming a new Public Art Commission that will work on our behalf, that will be named by the council, that will look at this document and other information, who will engage in our, with our community. And then they will bring back to us, and it is a big issue, a Public Art Annual Plan. And it will take them a year to create this annual plan. And we, we don't have the time or the bandwidth to do that. They are going to do it. They will come back. If they recommend things we don't like, we'll vote no. We do that all the time with other people. If we like it, we'll vote to do it. If Lloyd says we need staffing, we'll listen to Lloyd, but then we vote. So we giving a group the responsibility to make this happen. And I think what's unique about this is that we have created a commission that necessarily appoints people from all seven districts in the community. This is not just about downtown. This is West Concord, is South Concord. It is in all of our community. It's going, this is not a downtown art project. This is a, one for the entire city. And so for those of you sitting here or watching, I hope you apply. This is going to be a lot of fun and a lot of hard work. But you can do some good stuff and bring us some wise ideas. So thank you.
So is that a motion?
I need a motion.
So I move the motion number two that was tabled.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion from council? Okay, go, go ahead.
I wanted to explain this. I do not like the plan. That's why I voted against it. And I do not want to implement that plan. But the Art Commission was put together correctly. So I'm going to vote yes on the Art Commission because I think it is the correct thing to do. But if we instruct them to implement this plan, I think we've created a monster and now I'm pontificating, but.
Any comments?
One thing, like all commissions, I'll say, I gotta say something again. If J.C. talks, I have to. I will say this, I think if you look at the commissions, they're an independent organization. They have heads and brains on their own. They think for themselves. I think what you'll see is these folks will take off in a direction that they'll come back to us if it makes sense. And if, if they'll take a modification of this plan, I'm pretty sure of that, they're not going to, they're not going to sort of miss anything.
Always, I hope you're right.
I think I'm, I hope I'm right. I hope we guide them properly on that. Am I correct in saying that? Okay, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other comments?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to note, I'm, I'm saying yes for the same reason as J.C. I believe that this is necessary and I'm, I'm good with that, so.
All right. Andy, anything else?
Let's take a vote and then I have a final comment.
Well, I think you need to make the comment.
Okay.
Before we had the vote, if this is something.
So the comment is, I, I deeply appreciate the way this council and the staff have engaged this entire process. We don't all see eye to eye on this, but I think there has been a lot of honest, faithful conversation about this. We may end up in different places, but I think this is an illustration of how the council should work, of listening to one another, taking different perspectives, coming out to what we think is best for the city. And I thank J.C. and Brian for supporting the commission.
All right. Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you very much. You're unanimous.
Well, there we go. Moving on. So we have, next we have persons wishing to be heard. Let me read something on that before we go forward. If you haven't signed up, you need to come forward and sign, sign up. Our time to recognize persons to be heard on the agenda is an opportunity to hear from anyone wishing to speak. This is time for listening for the council. The subject will be noted in a required action or request. A city ma, the city manager will note as such and provide steps for required response or after action. Please leave your contact details with a city clerk to facilitate communication. I have five people have signed up to speak. First of all, Eric J. Landsberger, Rares County Youth Orchestra, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Eric J. Landsberger. I'm the orchestra director at Central Cabarrus High School. I've been in Concord for five years. This is my fifth year teaching at Concord. Uh, I'm sorry, at Central Cabarrus High School. Uh, I also perform music locally and in the surrounding areas. You can hear me on Sundays playing for Southern Strain Brewing Company, either here or in Charlotte. I've been a professor, professional musician for 30 years. Earned my degree in performance from the School of Arts and my credentials for teaching at UNCG. My orchestra program at Central Cabarrus is the one high school program in the city, in the county, in Cabarrus County schools. There's one other school and that's two out of 45. So I'm here to share with you my vision for the Cabarrus County Youth Orchestra. I have this flyer that was handed out to you for your information. Sorry about that. There appears to be a great lack of string music education, so I'm endeavoring to create a nonprofit to allow students in Cabarrus County and in Concord, of course, to, to study violin, viola, cello and bass after school. I'm currently waiting for my nonprofit status. I've got students who are already expressing interest. I've been in discussion with the Arts Council with Liz Fitzgerald about using their space, as well as the First Presbyterian Church here downtown, about using their space as well. So I hope you'll take a moment to check out the website for the Central Cabarrus, uh, sorry, I'm getting my schools and programs mixed up, the Cabarrus County Youth Orchestra. And if you'd like to contact me, my contact info is there. And you can learn more about me as well.
Thank you very much.
You're guys. Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Wilma King Means, come forward.
Good evening, Wilma. We go back. Good evening. My name is Wilma King Means and I'm very concerned about the bridge issue. I'm old enough to remember when we did not even have a bridge there. We have been told that it would probably be four years or more before it can be replaced. Not having a bridge is a safety concern of mine because of the travel time for rescue vehicles. And I'm related to a lot of senior citizens in the community. I'm asking you to consider other options, such as maybe moving the bridge to the right of the current bridge, which is the property of the park and the walk with Greenway stuff that y'all do, or others do. Move the bridge to the right, using that property so that maybe you could get started earlier. Or moving the bridge to the left and purchase the property from the property owners. And in the meantime, tear down the existing bridge now before someone is injured, because today signs were down. And people are still walking and driving across that bridge. So my request is that you all consider, I don't know where you are on the planning process. We had a speaker at the Logan Community Meeting and she had some pictures and we talked about it. So I hope that if you are not too far, these can be considered in place of just waiting to get everything in place. And I understand about the budget year and the fiscal year and the planning and all that kind of stuff. But please just take this into consideration and while you consider it, take the bridge down and put better signs up. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilma.
What's the timeline on that, Mayor? Do we know the timeline on that?
It's, it's a NCDOT project and so they move at their timeline. So that's not a good answer for you.
About 12 months, though, right?
Well, the planning may be done by that, but it's probably going to be at least three years.
We're talking about the Lincoln Street Bridge.
Correct. Excuse me. Philip, you want to come up and talk about it? I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you, members of council. Uh, yeah, so the Lincoln Street Bridge project is currently under design. We're, we're in like a 25% plan phase right now. We, we have come to the, the meetings and will be continuing to come to the, the Logan Community Meetings moving forward. I believe we're potentially looking at an April date for our next meeting with the actual design consultant to give a more thorough update. The design process does take about a year and then we'll be moving into the demolition and construction phase of that. We are pushing on the design team right now to see where we can tighten up those timeframes. We've, we've expressed in the range of about three years or so in the, in the total process of this. But again, we are, every meet, every month we're meeting with the design team. We're looking for efficiencies that we can find. Whether it's, it, it's a, it's a concurrent permitting phases that we can find to do along the way. But we're trying to find every way we can to speed this up.
My apologies, too many other DOT bridge projects, so.
Usually it's their fault.
It's good to know that that's a high priority for us.
Wait, wait. If you do, I have to have the council to approve, approve that. So let's, why don't you talk after the meeting?
Oh, can you come now, Scott? I'm leaving.
Afterwards, afterwards.
Can I ask Phil a question? Or you? Phil? Sometimes J.C. doesn't put his brain in before you ask. Is there any way we could do a temporary bridge while we get through this? Is that something that council could entertain? I'm, I don't speak for council, but is there any options that, that you could bring to council to, to help? Because this is.
There is additional environmental and, and property acquisition that was not part of the original project. So I mean, that, that would be a major cost budget change to that, if, if that's the desire for us to look into.
I think we ought to look at that option. I, that's a, I've been down there and that is a, it's a, it's, I mean, it just causes all kinds of issues about getting around. I mean, you're.
I mean, it shuts off the whole side of the other neighborhood. I mean, there's only one.
It shuts it off, yeah. I would vote, not voting, but I would make a, like J.C. asked, is that we look at a temporary measure, see if it's even feasible.
Yeah, staff to.
I do want to, I do want to temper Ms. Means. I mean, this could be hugely costly. I mean, it, it, it might not be doable, but I, I think it, we should investigate every possible means, if possible. It is, it's a huge issue, so, but I don't speak for.
I wanted to apologize because when I looked up, I lost my place with my bifocals because another option was a street that we used to have between Lincoln Street and Wilshire. When I walked in the mill, kind of mill, I would walk that street and that's property. And I'm not saying eminent domain, but purchase property outright might would be a suggestion that we could use.
Okay, Wilma. Well, I, I, I think council could, could have this discussion. But let's, I mean, I think we all wanted to get done. We wanted to get done quickly, but we don't know all of the different ramifications of what's going on. So that's, that's really staff would be the.
Possibly have some information by our second work session.
There you go.
It, it's, it may or may not be likely. I mean, this is a, that's a large change to the project that was not factored in to put a temporary bridge in, so.
We'll have to ask the design team.
Yeah.
See what this, oh, I'm, we're certainly not the, the structural design experts per se, that's why we hire these consultants. So I, we'll, we'll be happy to ask them to put together an estimate for that.
And I guess one, one more, probably more realistic comment is to look at this from a schedule based. And, and let council have that. In other words, that schedule is driving the project. And is there anything else? Is there? Because we, we don't know how to build a bridge. Lloyd probably does. But I think there's got to be some way. There's always some way to cut time. And can, can you bring us some ideas?
Yeah, I, I, I think there are, there's always other options. The budget that has been put together doesn't include those other options. And so while there are other options, there's a significant price tag that comes with that. So we can bring that to council and then it's a, you know, decision that council would make. Because I think the money we have now, there's, the additional money for the changes you're talking about is, is general fund dollars. I don't know that there's any other funds we can go for temporary solutions. But we'll, we'll come back with something.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, Wilma. All right. David Cornelius?
Welcome back. I'm sure you all remember me, Full Time Funky Town. And I appreciate y'all's time. And it's been an interesting discussion tonight. I've enjoyed hearing it. Would like to offer our assistance. We are a nonprofit. We raise money through local businesses that we can give cat, tax credit for. And that's how businesses can get engaged in city art, in public art. There was talk about doing some pads downtown in the streetscapes and the master art plan, about putting sculptures up. That's what we do. And what a great way to tie us all in together. We actually already have sculptures at Clearwater Studios. Those sculptures were destined to leave, but we worked it out with Sarah Gay. Those sculptures were destined to leave, but we worked it out with Sarah Gay. I think Lloyd is aware of this. We worked out the contracts. We worked directly with the artists and with Sarah Gay and Lloyd to make sure that everything was legit, to keep those sculptures there when they were destined to move. So we already have a partnership, and we already have a partnership with the county at the Rotary Square, where we have two sculptures. And so I think where the city might be busy doing city things, a nonprofit, Full Time Funky Town, is full-time art, and that is what we do. We raise money, and we produce art, and it's all types of art. I went through this field last time. I don't want to do that again, because, you know, just reach out. We want to be a part, we can help. We have the capabilities, we have the means, and we have the passion. And I just ask for an opportunity, please reach out. We can assist in the art endeavor, because art is important. We can facilitate the art. If you are busy doing other things, please reach out. We would love to assist in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is that right? Cat. Sorry, Cat.
Hello. Thank you for this time and to be able to speak with you. That was my husband, and my name is Caitlin, or Cat Cornelius, and I really just wanted to come up here and kind of tell you something, a project that we worked on this year that is why I believe art is important. There's a peacock mural down on Kerr Street and McGill, so y'all know of it. So Full Time Funky Town kind of gathered up some community members. Anyone who wanted to hold a brush, come on over, we're going to paint this. And I mean, I got an art teacher that was helping me divvy this out to a bunch, to our community. But what happened was, one of the days that I was there to just do a little cleanup work by myself, I'm on the ladder, and there's a mother and her young child who are interested in what's going on. Now, I mention this because, this next part, because I think it's important about diversity. I believe that this was an Indian mother and her child, and her, the mother asked me, can my daughter paint something? And I'm like, heck, yeah. So I got off the ladder, and I gave this little girl a brush. I pointed at what we were doing, and she went over there, and she did it like she owned it. Now, that's not the kicker part here. The kicker part that is so important about why art is important is that she's going to look at that every time she walks and drives by it. She's going to have love and self-confidence in herself, and, I mean, yes, everybody has to eat, but you have to, like, want, you have to desire, and art does that to community. It does that to people who are not represented as well as everybody. So for Full Time Funky Town, really what I want to say is that's our mission, is to include the diversity of this town, which it has a beautiful array of different types of people that have so much to say, and that's what art does. So, thanks again for hearing all of this, and I appreciate y'all spending all last year, this year, working on this art plan. Thank you again.
Thank you, Cat. Liz Fitzgerald.
Good evening. Lovely to see you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Liz Fitzgerald. I am the Executive Director of the Cabarrus Arts Council, and I want to thank you all for the decision you came to tonight to move forward the Public Art Guide and to establish a commission for public art here in our community. I know, through lots of research that has been conducted and collected by the Americans for the Arts and many others, that art is an essential way for communities to express to their citizenry. You belong here, and you have a way of engaging in this community. It isn't necessarily about the picture that you have on the wall, or the sculpture that you have on your street. It is the way that you are reflecting to a community, that they matter, that they are respected, and that they have, they have culture and traditions to share. And in doing that, you find those people who do become engaged, as Gatt said, who do see themselves in the built environment, and they become a part of your solution to other problems that you have as a community. So I really look forward to being a part of the commission and the work that the city has moving forward in a public art plan, and I think you're going to see many benefits for that for generations here in Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, and thanks for your work helping with this.
Very glad, very glad.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Mayor? Andy, have you signed up?
I did not sign up.
Okay.
May I speak?
You may speak.
I just want to recognize that Liz, with the Cabarrus Arts Council, is the only ex-officio person who is going to be on our Public Arts Commission, and she's going to give great leadership along with others. So it is a partnership throughout the community with Cat and others. I think this is going, anyway, just want to recognize that she is going to be a member of that commission.
And if you could leave your, him and your contact information with Kim, so we can make sure we put you on. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to presentations, petitions, and requests. Number one, consider authorizing City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Fitzfields.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sheila presented this item to Council on Tuesday evening. This is for full design services for Phase Two of the Academy Gibson Park area. The recommendation in front of you tonight is services in the amount of $300, $3,000, $300,3600 to Fitzfields for those services. So with, staff would ask the Council to consider that this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yep. Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Item number two, consider authorizing City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Talbert Bright and Ellington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dirk went over this item with Council on Tuesday evening. This is for six properties, the services to acquire those properties. Six of those properties are in the Misty Woods subdivision. One is a parcel at the end of West Marlin Drive. So you can see in your agenda notes, the professional services would not exceed $162,271 for Talbert Bright and Ellington.
All right. Is there a motion from Council?
So moved.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? No discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Item three, consider awarding a proposal for surveying services prepared transmission easement plots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex covered this item with Council on Tuesday evening. This is for surveying services. The company that's being proposed is Lawrence Associates P.A., based on their qualifications. The amount of the contract would not exceed $121,900.
Thank you. Is there a motion from Council?
Yeah, a motion to adopt, Mayor.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? No discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Item four, consider awarding a bid for electric distribution materials for Delivery Three and Delivery Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex also covered this item on Tuesday evening. This is for the materials for Delivery Three, Delivery Four tie-in. The bid amount from Wesco Distribution is $627,810.2. We ask that you approve this contract this evening.
All right. Is there a motion from Council? We have a motion in second. Andy's a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Item five, consider authorizing City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract addendum with Selco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff covered this item with Council on Tuesday evening. This is a contract addendum with Selco Partnership, which is also known as Verizon Wireless, for leased space on the downtown tank. So they do, the extension does include a rent escalator, as well as additional renewable terms.
Right, thank you. Is there a motion from Council?
So moved.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Number six, consider authorizing City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract addendum with McKim and Creed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was covered in your discussion on Tuesday evening. Jeff covered this item. This is the second contract addendum with McKim and Creed for the Highway 29 Water Pump Station, in the amount of $25,000. We ask that you allow staff to move forward on this.
Right, thank you. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? No discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Seven, consider a preliminary application from Ritt Calder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sue covered this item with Council on Tuesday evening. This is a request to receive sewer-only services outside the city limits, properties located at 5117 Roberta Road. As Sue described, this one is a little different, because the property is within Harrisburg service limits, but the Harrisburg does not have any utilities at the location, so the recommendation is to move forward with preliminary application excluding annexation.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? No discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Consent agendas, or motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion second. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you. Going now to matters not on the agenda, the Transportation Advisory Committee attack.
I know this short meeting's gone long already. There were three step amendments, Transportation Improvement Plan modifications that D.O.T. brought to us. I thought they were interesting. Two of them were ours in Concord. One was for the Poplar Tent from Gable Oaks to George Lyles. That project moved out one year. Every stage of it has moved out one year. Construction now is 2028. More importantly, the budget doubled for that project to $41 million. The other project were the two bridges on Highway 29 at Poplar Tent and 29 over Irish Buffalo Creek. Schedule stayed the same. Construction's 2023, this year. Budget doubled from $5 million to $10 million. Some good news, I guess, the Reeline Union Cemetery Road, which I think is a very important project. If you don't know that project, Rock Hill at 29 will shoot straight across through the U-Haul lot, and will tie into Union Cemetery over at the county's bus facility, which will basically isolate the section there, Cindy Minnick Chevrolet. So all of those people that take a left on 29, or right on Cabarrus, or right on Union Cemetery will just shoot straight across. And it also semiopens up the back of the grounds of Concord for industrial development. That project moved a year, but it's actually let 2025 and completion in 2027, so that's good news. We talked about the Poplar Tent. I think the other good news is our Evo Road intersection is finally, I think, being let this month. That's the, which we were promised two years ago, and we approved up, yeah, we approved all those houses down there, because we had improvements. We're actually going to get them, so that should start, you should see some construction. And then we had one other, what was the funding? TAC funding for sidewalks. Philip had a sidewalk project that was funded by TAC, million and a half or million and three. So, all good news. We do have a meeting with Division Ten tomorrow to discuss that Union Cemetery and the possibility of extending it. I'm looking at Steve Morris, extending it on over to 601, which is only about 700 or 800 feet. We just have to sneak it through the bus facility to the side of it somehow, but that would tie the grounds into Highway 601, which could be a huge plus. And we're also going to talk about the Stale Road Bridge that is supposed to let in 2024. Right now, they're showing a completion of that bridge in 2026, so Stale Road would be closed for two years. We're going to discuss that with D.O.T., and right now, they're showing the Stale Road extension in 2030, and that would be my question, is are we going to shut the road down for two years, just to wait four years to actually do the project? So we'll have that with D.O.T. tomorrow.
Yeah. Why would they do Stale Road Bridge and then turn around and?
That's what we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think originally it was all one project, and they split it out.
When we first talked about replacing it, it was like a six-month. I don't know if Wilma's still in the room, but now it's a two-year construction on that bridge, and I can just, I can't imagine us having Stale Road closed.
There's a lot of businesses down there in the business park.
So we'll talk about it. We'll see what we can do.
We can't let that happen with all the businesses down that way, in that business park.
Terry's poking me. Yes, the main thing is to talk about striping in Cabarrus County. I don't know what, you know, we're just asking, the striping, as everybody knows, it's almost on every D.O.T. road, and it's a COVID thing, and they could not get the one paint that's approved to stripe the roads, is my understanding, but we'll be talking with them about that, and hopefully Division Ten's going to bring us some plan to do some striping maintenance. Philip's giving me this look.
Are they going to allow us to do it ourselves? Is that what you're saying?
We can't. I'll speak for Lloyd. I asked that. It's down, just real quick, me and Terry, bucket of paint in the back of your car.
I got a pickup truck.
I got a roller. We can do it. Is that it? Any more good news?
Something that's good.
Yes, it is. All right. Moving to the Metropolitan Transit Commission, MTC. Sitting through the meeting this week, or last week, not a whole lot dealing with Concord or Cabarrus County, but from, one of the topics we talked about was microtransit, which is sort of an interesting idea, where you use microtransit, you use Uber-type access for the last mile. They'll be trying to do that in Charlotte, and so we'll watch that closely to see how that develops. And also, LJ has informed for me that the first of the new buses for Concord, hybrid buses, are in production, and when will they be delivered? Or when will they be delivered?
The first of the eight new buses came offline today and should be here in about seven days.
All right.
And it'll be delivered, basically, one a day for roughly 10 days.
And we have eight total, correct? All right, very good. Anything else to add?
Just if you want to see what they look like getting built on the Ryder Transit, Concord and Applesary Transit Facebook page, we've got some photos from the back row today.
All right. Thank you. Central Lina Regional Council?
They had their annual meeting last night in Charlotte. They are increasing the number of municipalities that are participating in it. I put a sheet of paper in front of you from the minutes last night, and they emphasized part of what they do is strategic planning, which I think our council is going to talk with them about. A specific thing is they, we voted not to increase the fees to be a part of Central Lina. They've frozen that. It's been frozen for 10 years. That's all very good. A fun observation, what's fun about that, being you get to talk to all these people, I visited with one of the councilmen from Troutman. Every major street in Troutman is in North Carolina Department of Transportation Street, and they were just told that they will be up for review in 2029 to see if there will be any changes or improvements on any of their roads. Welcome to transportation.
There you go. Thank you. LJ, anything for CK Transit Commission?
No, sir, we didn't have any action items, so we delayed the meeting. The next one will be in March, but we'll have the budget.
Okay. All right. One of the sewer authorities in Cabarrus County.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Two really quick updates. At our meeting last month, we did have a discussion item to, for the board to decide how we were going to engage in the new interlocal discussion for the 24 capacity. That may seem insignificant, but we had a lot of options for how we began that process. On our agenda for next week, the board decided to go ahead and hit it head-on at the board level and see how we do, so that is our plan coming up next week, to begin that discussion, to hopefully come to quick agreement on how we're going to distribute that flow. The other point, you are now aware of the true-up information that we had been waiting on. We are preparing some options on how to deal with that, and look forward to meeting with you guys in a few weeks to go over how we're going to work through that and have a good plan moving forward.
That'd be at our second work session.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. We build Concord?
Okay, Patrick the night off. We had meetings most of the day, construction and property acquisition, which Steve is a member of. Our townhome projects is in the middle of plan review, so we're getting through all the issues with a project of that size. But on the better side, I think we released seven more single-family homes, not single, some triplex. some triplex, some duplex, some single families. And we're going to build those concurrently. And the schedule we've got is about 90 days. So we should have seven more units ready to sell in, in 90 days. Knock on wood. So going well, going well. Steve, anything to add? Do you?
All right. Thank you very much. Concord United Committee. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Ms. Kowchinski, Mr. Payne, and Ms. Deason. Just three updates. The Concord United Committee did reconvene their meetings in January, at which point Chantel and Kim from HR gave a very comprehensive presentation on internal recruitment practices, demographics of our workforce compared to the city's population, and improvements that have been made. So the Subcommittee for Hiring will meet next Tuesday, the 14th, at 2:00 p.m. The second item is that the committee does have one vacancy. And they appreciate Council's review of any recommendations they make to fill that vacancy. And last but not least is that the committee is considering opportunities for learning and development based on their funding, and they'll have their choices finalized by March 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill?
Yes, go ahead.
The vacancy was Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments from Council? Well, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. Have a good weekend. Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Steve. Reverend Donald.